How to define the temperature? Already we know, temperature it is defined as the intensity of hotness or coldness. If we touch the one object, we give us some expression or we can say it is it hot or cold. It is easy to express coldness or hotness of the body. Is it clear? But what is the exact intensity for that? We use the one device, name of the device is called as thermometer. Thermometer measures the intensity. So, it is said to be intensity of hotness or coldness of the body is called temperature. Intensity of hotness or coldness of the body is called temperature. Hotness or coldness is called heat. Is called as temperature. See, in the sky at night, all the stars appears within the same brightness or different brightness or different shining. Stars appear with different shining natures or different brightness. Because different sizes of the stars produce the different temperatures. That is why the color of the star indicates important previous examination question this is. Color of the stars indicates what is that? Temperature. Stars appear twinkling due to refraction of light. Because stars produce the light energy, it enters into the atmosphere. Here due to the changes in the atmosphere, it is bending from one medium to another medium. That is why it appears like that, right? Twinkling of stars due to refraction of light. Measurement of temperature it is called as thermometry. Thermometry, it is the measurement of temperature important. Examiners framing the questions on this. Therm is related to temperature important or not? Therment arthamanti temperature. Metri ente meaning ente dinana measurement. So, measurement of temperature name and amu? Thermometry. Temperature expressed in different units. Degree Celsius, degree Fahrenheit and Kelvin. Celsius, Fahrenheit, Kelvin, what are the units to express the temperature? Temperature expressed in Celsius, Fahrenheit, Kelvin. What is the CGS unit to express the temperature? Degree Celsius. Temperature SI unit Kelvin. This is the previous year examination bit. Right, now. Going to discuss various types of scales, their readings, their ranges and some important words in this area. Let us see. Various types of scales. We have the mainly three important scales. They are. Actually, we have the four scales. One is Celsius scale. Second one is Fahrenheit scale. Third one Kelvin scale. Fourth one Riemer scale. Another scale also there, Ramhein scale. But at present, we are using these three scales now. At present, we are not using these two scales. But however, mentioned Riemer scale values or ranges are zero to eighty degrees. Now let us see brief detail. First one Celsius scale. Second one Fahrenheit scale. Third one Kelvin scale. Yes, our concentration on these three scales Celsius, Fahrenheit, Kelvin. Dinana. Listen, listen carefully, please concentrate. We have the three scales. In this here, it is called as LFP. It is called as UFP. In all the scales, we have the three points. They are, one is lower fixed point, LFP means lower fixed point. Second one UFP, upper fixed point. Lower fixed point, upper fixed point, we have the two fixed points right now here. In Celsius scale, lower fixed point value zero degree Celsius. Upper fixed point hundred degree Celsius. In Fahrenheit scale, lower fixed point thirty-two degree Fahrenheit. Upper fixed point two hundred and twelve degree Fahrenheit. In Kelvin scale, lower fixed point, we are taking the rounding numbers in not to write the point one five one six. Yes, I am writing up to two seventy-three Kelvin only. Upper fixed point three seventy-three Kelvin. How many divisions are there in this? That means number of divisions in the scale. How to write the number of divisions in the scale? Let us see. Number of divisions in the scale is here too. Means upper fixed point minus lower fixed point, you will get the number of divisions. How to know or how to find out the number of divisions in a scale? You may find out number of divisions in a scale is equal to upper fixed point minus lower fixed point, right? So, here number of divisions in this scale are hundred. In Celsius scale, number of divisions are hundred. In Fahrenheit scale, number of divisions are two twelve minus thirty-two which is equal to one hundred and eighty. Third one. Number of divisions in Kelvin scale, upper fixed point minus lower fixed point which is equal to hundred. Now, see, one common point is there in this area. Number of divisions in Celsius scale is equal to number of divisions in Kelvin scale. Right, one more thing. What is the, what it indicates? Lower fixed point in all the scales indicates the melting point of ice or fusion of ice. Upper fixed point in all the scales represents boiling point of water. So, that is why I am writing here like this. Lower fixed point, it indicates the melting point of ice. What are the melting point of ice values in different scales? In Celsius zero, in Fahrenheit thirty-two, in Kelvin two seventy-three. Boiling point of water. In Celsius, hundred degree Celsius, Fahrenheit two twelve, next Kelvin scale, three seventy-three Kelvin. Human body temperature values. Human body temperature value in Celsius scale, thirty-six point nine degree Celsius or thirty-seven degree Celsius. Human body temperature in Fahrenheit scale, ninety-eight point four degree Fahrenheit or ninety-eight point six degree Fahrenheit. In Kelvin scale, three hundred and ten Kelvin. Next. At water temperature, both Celsius and Celsius and Fahrenheit scales will show the same reading. Celsius and Fahrenheit scales both will show the same reading at minus forty degrees. We will prove this value also. Where the Celsius and Fahrenheit scales shows the same value. At minus forty degrees Celsius scale and Fahrenheit scales both will show. Right, now, Fahrenheit and Kelvin scale, at what temperature? Both Fahrenheit scale, Kelvin scale shows the same reading, yes. Fahrenheit scale, Kelvin scale, both will show the same reading at five seventy-four point two five. At this value, both Fahrenheit Kelvin scale show the same value. Most important one this is just if you have remember this, easily you can identify the option regarding this concept, right? Let us see some more information regarding this. Now, the relation among the scales, how to know the relation among the scales? We have the formula, that is general formula to know the relation among the scales. Scale minus lower fixed point by upper fixed point minus lower fixed point is equal to constant. This is the formula, yes. It is the general formula. Now, it is applicable for and right for the Celsius, Fahrenheit and Kelvin scale. Now for Celsius scale. Scale, scale means here we have the Celsius that is C minus in that lower fixed point zero by upper fixed point. Upper fixed point in Celsius scale zero, lower fixed point in that scale is zero, equal to constant. Ritkan has been like to C by hundred is equal to constant. Next, Fahrenheit scale. Yes, to apply this formula for Celsius, Fahrenheit scale, yes for scale, what is that scale? Fahrenheit minus, what is its lower fixed point in the scale? Thirty-two by upper fixed point in that scale, two twelve minus lower fixed point in that scale, thirty-two which is equal to constant. Fahrenheit F minus thirty-two by two twelve minus thirty-two, one eighty is equal to constant. This is the Fahrenheit formula. Next Kelvin scale. For Kelvin scale, K minus two seventy-three by three seventy-three minus two seventy-three is equal to constant. K minus two seventy-three by three seventy-three minus two seventy-three, hundred equal to constant. There are the three formulas for different types of scales. Celsius scale, C by hundred is equal to constant. For Fahrenheit scale, F minus thirty-two by one eighty is equal to constant. For Kelvin scale, K minus two seventy-three by hundred is equal to constant. Now, what is the relation between Celsius and Fahrenheit? What is the relation between Celsius and Kelvin? What is the relation between Fahrenheit and Kelvin scale? Examiners asking and framing the questions from these areas. Let us see the relation among the scales. Now, relation between Celsius and Fahrenheit scale. Relation in between Celsius and Fahrenheit. Celsius formula already we know, T by hundred is equal to F minus thirty-two by one hundred and eighty which is equal to zero, zero get cancelled, two phi is a two ninja. Therefore, C by phi is equal to F minus thirty-two by nine. Ritkan has been like to C is equal to phi by nine into F minus thirty-two. Now, you can say easily, what is the relation between Celsius and Fahrenheit? C is equal to phi by nine into F minus thirty-two. If you don't know, if you forget this, easily you can find out this. C by hundred is equal to F minus thirty-two by hundred, one eighty. Examiners asking the question, sometimes examiners giving the C value, find out its value in Fahrenheit scale. Otherwise, sometimes giving the value in Fahrenheit, what is the Celsius value? Like this examiners asking the question. Let us see some numericals on this important one, this is question number one. If T is equal to ten degree Celsius, what is its value in Fahrenheit scale? This is the previous examination question, all are important. Listen carefully, right. What is our formula? If you forget this, take this one. It is derived from this one only, right? So, otherwise, if you have this formula, take this formula, substitute the given value, simplify, then you will get the answer. Either this one or this one, you have to take and substitute, you will get answer, very simple. Now, basic formula I am using, hundred, C by hundred T by hundred is equal to formula F minus thirty-two by one eighty here. Where C is equal to zero, zero cancel, two phi is a, two ninja. T value also mentioned, how much? Ten, ten by phi is equal to F minus thirty-two by nine. Phi ones, phi twos, by cross multiplication, two ninjas, eighteen is equal to F minus thirty-two. Therefore, F is equal to eighteen plus thirty-two, fifty degree Fahrenheit. Therefore, if C is equal to ten degree Celsius, the value of that value, the value in Fahrenheit is fifty degree. Another question. If human body temperature value thirty-seven degree Celsius, find out its value in Fahrenheit scale. Previous examination question this is. Write, write the formula, C by hundred is equal to F minus thirty-two by one eighty. Now substitute the given value, thirty-seven by zero, zero get cancelled here. Two ninjas, two phi'sa. So, therefore, thirty-seven by phi is equal to F minus thirty-two by nine. By cross multiplication, nine sevens are sixty-three, nine threes are twenty-seven plus six, thirty-three. Three thirty-three by phi plus thirty-two is equal to F here. Phi ones, phi six are thirty, thirty-three, phi six are thirty-three point six. Sixty-six plus thirty-two, ninety-eight point two plus six eight, three plus six nine, ninety-eight point six degree Fahrenheit. This is the value of value in Fahrenheit scale. T, another question on this, examiners asking this question also. It is also previous question. If Celsius scale, if the value in Celsius scale is thirty-six point nine degree Celsius, find out its value in Fahrenheit scale. Direct formula, just to substitute thirty-six point nine by hundred is equal to F minus thirty-two by one eighty. Instead of C, takes thirty-six point nine, important, listen, listen carefully. Zero, zero get cancelled, two ninjas, two phi'sa. By cross multiplication, nine ninjas, eighty-one or not? Nine sixes, fifty-four, fifty-four plus eight, sixty-two. Nine threes are twenty-seven, twenty-seven plus six, thirty-three. After one decimal point, that three thirty-two point one. Phi, phi is equal to F minus thirty-two. Phi ones, phi sixes, thirty, thirty-two, phi sixes, thirty, twenty-one point five fours, two'sa. Therefore, F is equal to sixty-six point four two plus thirty-two which is equal to ninety-six, ninety, sixty-six plus thirty-two, ninety-eight ninety-eight point four degree Fahrenheit. So, what is the change here? Yes, it is the important bit. What is that? See, here the value is thirty-seven. For thirty-seven degree Celsius, human body temperature ninety-eight point six degree Fahrenheit. For thirty-six point nine thirty-six point nine degree Celsius, body temperature ninety-eight point four. Here, what is the difference? Point one degree Celsius, zero point one degree Celsius. Here, value how much? Zero point two degree Fahrenheit. So, if the temperature increases by zero point one degree Celsius, what is the increasing value on Fahrenheit scale? Zero point two. Vakka point one degree Celsius kanaka Celsius scale lo mari te leda perigite Fahrenheit lo anta perugutun dinana, point two perugutundi. Andi ikada point one degree Celsius no, ikada point two degree Fahrenheit gat konstru chiyuchu. Next question on this, another important one, repeated question, number of times repeated question. Too many times examiners asked this question, that is, you know very well, I think. Already you know the answer also. At water temperature, Celsius and Fahrenheit scales will show the same reading. Already we discussed on the scale, sales direct value sicha. But if you have any doubt, I will give the clarification for this. Celsius Fahrenheit scales will show the same reading. Where the Celsius Fahrenheit scales will show the same reading. A question lo arthamey munde, where the Celsius Fahrenheit will show the same reading. Andi akkano samanamayte kada? Some value, they show the same value. Andi I equal a a twenty value edaito undo, dani x anukuntuna, let X, right. What is the formula? C by hundred is equal to formula, F minus thirty-two by one hundred and eighty. Here, given in Celsius scale value is X, Fahrenheit scale value X. So, instead of C and F, we have to take X only. X by hundred is equal to X minus thirty-two by one eighty. Now, zero, zero cancel, two phi'sa, two ninesa. By cross multiplication, nine X is equal to five into X, five X minus phi twosa, ten. Phi threesa, fifteen plus one, sixteen. So, nine X is equal to five X minus one sixty. Nine X minus five X, four X, four X is equal to minus one sixty. Therefore, four onesa, four foursa, zero. Therefore, X is equal to minus forty degrees. Which means both Celsius and Fahrenheit scales both show the same reading. That is minus forty degrees, repeated question. Just if you see two, three times, you can easily identify that option without any practice, right? Akka examaal, vayi, vaadne practice jisivanta kanta kooda, justumir sujseran kundi, easy answer chegalana.